First scheduled city council meeting in February. I do call this meeting to order and as usual, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our [inaudible 00:01:37]. To the justice for all.
Okay, and we'll have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also take role for us.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Gillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
The consent agenda is in your packet. We have a few items on that consent agenda and they do include, as you can see, those two ordinances that we talked about at our last meeting. They are on the consent agenda to be acted on with one vote with all the other items that are on the consent agenda. So if there are no additions or changes that you would like to see, we would need a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented to us in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next then, we have the regular agenda. I don't think there were any handouts, right? So again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Move to accept the agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Mayo, that we approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have an introduction of Andy Whitman, who is our new recreation program. Aaron, you want to do the privilege?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Mayor. If you look right behind my left here, Andy, if you want to stand up. Andrew has made it through the interview process and will begin full-time next Monday. We are thrilled to have him onboard here at the Park and Rec Department. Some of the things that Andy's kind of been involved in is he's a volunteer firefighter here in Wapaka. He's been involved in the five alarms dash for the fire department, coordinated that, along with helped out with flag football and some other things. We are more than confident with his ability and really excited to see what he can do for us. So Andy, I don't know if you want to say anything?
For the opportunity, I've been a member of the community. And helped the community move forward, running the Park and Rec Department. So it's a good partnership. I think we can get a lot accomplished.
Great.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Andy. Nice to have you here tonight. Anybody have any questions of Andy? Let's put them on the spot, or anybody? Okay, thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Next, we have a thank you note from the family of Roger Johnson. Roger had passed away and that was Lieutenant Jeff Johnson's father. So that's informational purposes. Let's move on to business then. We'll go to unfinished business. And this is, has to do with the Wapaka County Tourism Project and the Gem Grant and the amount of $3,240. And this was on the December council meeting and you had asked that it be tabled and brought forward. So this is where we're at now. So I'm going to turn it over to Henry and I think he has a couple, Mike and Dave are here today.
Yeah, I was just going to introduce two individuals. Mike Colas with UW Extension and Dave Teal with Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation. They're sort of the staff for our efforts. It's a multi-jurisdictional effort. We're in our third year and I think they have some specific information they want to present on the project because when we talked about it in December, there were some really good questions and I wasn't really able to field them, so.
Good evening, council members and mayor. We just want to kind of talk about where we've been and where we're going with this project and give you that information. Take any questions you may have about what's going on. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on the history, but this is our third year and these are the partners that have been involved all three years. Two members from each of the eight communities have been part of a tourism task force. Your members are Henry and Terry from the Chamber. So they've been with us every step of the way here as we went through this process for the last two years. And of course, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism is the one who runs this program and we're in the third year of a three-year grant process with them. So after year three, they expect us to maintain this and sustain this and that's what we're working for. Again, you've, you know, probably heard me do this ad nauseam about who we are in Wapaka County. These are our three top sectors that really make us go, if you will. The manufacturing sector is a $2.1 billion industry and ag is just under $900 million and tourism, just under $80 million. They account for about 51% of our jobs and of course, manufacturing, about 24% of those jobs, 35% of the income being paid out in wages. Obviously, that's a huge thing for us, so we concentrate on that a lot. Tonight, we're talking about tourism, though. And the hometown program, that was back in 2008. We got a grant from the Wisconsin Department of Commerce. And really, the upshot of that really was to do some capacity building inside the communities and to start to get everyone to understand that if we work together as a county, we're going to be much more effective at pulling visitors into the county and just, we have so much more to offer if we present ourselves as a county. Now, obviously, the Wapaka area has been, you know, top-notch tourism for a long time. So, you know, graciously, Terry and Henry and the Wapaka area has pulled the rest of the county along, if you will, to get up to the level that you're at. We're not there yet, but still, I still believe that there are a lot of great things in the county outside the Wapaka area that just enhance what's going on in Wapaka. So that's really the upshot of what we did in the hometown program was to build that capacity, build that network. Now, the joint effort marketing grant, which is what we're into now for year three, was really specifically focused at how can we grow our tourism economy? This slide is just to point out why. And the why is, if you look at that chart, 96 cents out of every dollar, just that 4% that goes to air travel, which we don't do a lot of bringing tourists in here by air, is really being spent in our small businesses. So this is, from my perspective, how we grow and how we bring back our downtown businesses, our retail and service sectors. Those are the areas that the money's being spent in when people come to town, people come to the county. So let's bring some more people here. Now, the background to year one was really creating, was all the research and creating the brand. That is actually our brand logo sitting up on top, the Wapaka County logo there. And all the research that was involved, finding out who comes here, why do they come here? What's, you know, what's the demographics of the people that are coming here? And we know that, after going through all this, we know that a lot of people that are like the people that are coming here are based in those two suburbs in Milwaukee. And that's why those are highlighted there because we want to target people that are similar to the people that are already coming to Wapaka County to spend money and draw some more of them there. We know that they need to be further than 90 miles away to create overnight stays and that was really some of the point of the first, or the second year, was to get people to stay here longer. They spend more money, obviously, if they stay here. And so those were two targets for us to spend our money in advertising. How did we do that? We identified really a new way to really go about targeting people. We knew who they were, so now we hooked up with Time Warner Cable, who was able to deliver cable ads specifically into those markets. So they could literally target the households that are in those circles and run cable, our cable ads in those areas specifically. They are able to segment their markets to that point. And then, in addition, while we were in the middle of year two, the technology, as you know, changes quite rapidly. So they were able to come up with another offer for us, which was to target people through the internet. So they have, obviously, an internet company as well as a cable company. So in 30 days in 2013, because we didn't start running our ads until June because of the weather, we didn't want to spend our money and not attract people here. We wanted to wait till it got nice and we were concentrated on the second quarter and it took a little while last spring to get nice. So those were the days that we ran over 1,200 spots and those are some, just some of the channels that our spot was run on. We decided to use some creative people that are already a part of our county, that are a part of Wapaka County, even Wapaka area, and have national and regional exposure already. So Roger Radley, I'm not, I'm sure, you know, everybody knows Roger here, but Roger is from the Wapaka area and is a national comedian. And I contacted Roger to see if he was interested and he graciously accepted and did a free commercial for us last year, which was pretty cool. And Roger creates some really, really good characters. The, what we really want to do is keep that going and create more commercials starring Roger and using a bunch of the characters that he has created over the years. And we're going to show you the commercial that we did do last year. Mad Dog and Merrill are from New London. They have a television show that is aired in six states in the Midwest. So we bought some time on their television show. They plugged Wapaka County for a whole segment and then, of course, we ran our ads throughout the season on their show. And again, they discounted that very much for us because of their connection to Wapaka County and New London. Then when we got to the internet, we were able to, again, if you've ever surfed the web and you go searching for something, and I'll just give a personal example, over the Christmas holidays, I bought a coat online for my wife and I did a lot of research and looked at a lot of coats. And, well, for the next week and a half to two weeks, I had banner ads popping up on every website I was on, selling, trying to sell me a coat. So that's how it works. And that's what we were doing was, we know, again, who our profile person is. If they're searching a certain amount of, or a certain website, a certain number of websites that we have deemed that are relevant to Wapaka County outdoors, et cetera, et cetera, then they are, ended up getting our banner ad popped in front of them. So again, you can see the number of impressions that we were able to get. And again, all we did was carve up the money that we were spending. We didn't spend more money. And if you had a chance to read my report, again, I kind of pointed out that this is an area that's probably cost prohibitive to get into if you are a small business. But doing it together as a cooperative, again, building that network together in the county to do things like this makes a lot of sense. Everybody can get a pretty big bang for a very reasonable buck. Yeah, we're going to go, at this point, we're going to go to the video and we're going to talk about the website, which is really the whole point of what we were doing with our ads, is driving people to the new website that we developed. So Mike's going to take it from here for a little bit and then I'll be back.
Reiterate a couple of things, to reiterate a couple of things that Dave said. First of all, for those of you that have read George Orwell's 1984, or maybe watched a movie like that, when you use your credit card or when you surf the web, things are really summarized and given to those companies and then they're purchased when we do studies like this. So we know a lot about what you buy. If you use a credit card, we know where you buy, what you buy, where you travel, et cetera. And we use that to marketing, for marketing our community. Related to that, to use strategies to take advantage of that data, using a collaborative approach is much more powerful. The Gem Grant that helped fund much of this would not have been possible absent all eight communities collaborating. It was, as its name entails, a joint effort grant. And then, as Dave said, you know, to buy airtime in the Milwaukee market or to do some of these things is cost prohibitive to any, any single business and probably any single community. So here's the commercial. The commercial targets those people who tend to come to Wapaka County. The slogan that was developed as part of the brand is "It's Your Day." Why? Because we know the people that come here through that data that I just mentioned are very independent-minded. So this is a commercial that tries to address you being independent-minded and coming to Wapaka County and doing your own thing, whatever that thing is that you like to do. Trusting Josh has this all set up.
That's right. I'm drinking milk right out of the carton. I live life on my own terms. I've visited Wapaka County. I battled the whitewater of the Wolf River, biked Ecolic backcountry roads, caught bass on sky-blue lakes, perused shops, hit a feather and yawned, "Oh, oh, what a piece of work!"
Hey Shakespeare, you better have a glass for that!
Visit WapakaCounty.com. Get clicking, start living. I'd rather hear the call from Wapaka County.
The idea is just to get, give a short snippet. "It's Your Day," drive them to the website. Is there any way to put the volume up?
No.
On the speakers? That's it?
Okay.
All right. We're going to have to listen intently here. I'm going to take you to the website and I'm going to direct your attention up there because you're going to sort of see my tail end here and I'll talk loud. But let me show you the website that that commercial drives you to.
Well, he could, or maybe if the computers is...
Because I'm going to show you a couple of videos. Hopefully, they'll come through. So here's the website. You have across the top, of course, a standard bar that takes you to certain types of attractions, lodging, outdoors, services, et cetera. The front page also has, you know, pictures that are intended to be season-specific and attractive. As you go down, you're going to see a map that can be used for navigation. I'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then you're going to see some featured places that will rotate based on who has paid for the featured level of subscription. So let's just pretend we're a tourist for a little bit and if you paid attention, this weekend we had up in my neck of the woods, up in Iola, the Iola Winter Carnival. So let's say that your wife was Scandinavian and she talked you into going up to the Iola Winter Carnival. Well, we're going to search and we can search everywhere or we can search in a particular community. Well, we know it's up in Iola. So we're going to search in Iola and figure out what kind of events are going on in Iola. Now, nothing is there right now, but that was this weekend. So we're going to pretend that we're a couple of days behind. So when you go to events, you're going to see a whole host of events that are occurring in Wapaka County. You can search the entire county, you can search an area. And when you go here, not only do you have the very basic information of where and when, but you also have varying levels of descriptions, some robust, some just quick descriptions. So here you can see, oop, not my normal computer. This is Josh's, so I'm getting used to it. I apologize for that. So you can see a description of what exactly that entailed. Let's say that you lived down in Milwaukee and you needed to know how to get to this particular event. It's very convenient. You don't have to go outside to Google Maps. You just go right here. Say you're in Milwaukee, you get directions and bingo, up come directions to get you to where you need to go. The map as well as, of course, the descriptive directions that you all are very used to. So now let's say you were up there, you had a little bit too much ludifist and you decide, you know what, I need to stay overnight. And I hear that there's some pretty nice lodging places around down in that Wapaka area. Wapaka has the most lodging rooms out of any particular community in Wapaka County. And so let's go to lodging and... Go to bed and breakfast. And the reason I'm going to bed and breakfast is because I went to lodging. I guess this is a little slower. Let's go to the Apple Tree Lane. We hear it's nice this time of year. And one of the things that we did with this project is maximize the use of video. We know that travelers, and I'll mention this in a little bit, rely heavily on the internet and heavily on video. Reading is a lost art in many cases. Peg was listening. I don't know if she was or not. So here we go, let's watch a video. There are 34 of these.
My husband Mike and I own the Apple Tree Lane Bed and Breakfast here in Wapaka, Wisconsin. Just happened to trip upon this beautiful homestead. The home was actually built in 1880. I walked in the front door, had a wonderful, warm and welcoming, you know, feeling and just loved the, loved the home. We're on seven and a half acres and 400 feet of this beautiful Crystal River frontage. First of all, we try to create an environment that feels like you're somewhere special but not so fussy that you can't put your feet up, pour yourself a cup of coffee in the morning and just enjoy yourself. We offer a full breakfast. Our name, of course, is the Apple Tree Lane Bed and Breakfast and we still have the seven apple trees and three pear trees left on the property. So we also have a lot of the blackberries and black raspberries. So because that's what's on my land right now, I have a lot of specialty apple recipes and a lot of berry recipes. So, you know, we love to do all kinds of different dishes. I love doing fresh pear crepes with rum-soaked raisins and some, you know, whipped cream and that's absolutely delicious. The Bed and Breakfast has a real home-type ambiance and yet you feel like you're in a special place. The rooms are comfortable. They're not huge. You don't feel overwhelmed by the size, but they're very comfortable in terms of size. The food is wonderful. She makes a beautiful breakfast and she always has cookies or brownies or something out that you can nibble on. But we are open year-round, so when it's, you know, a snowstorm and you've just got done cross-country skiing, you can come and watch a movie and just cozy up in front of your fireplace and then take a whirlpool jacuzzi tub. And sometimes we have people say, you know what, I just want to stay right at the Bed and Breakfast, read out on the covered porch, sit down by the river and do a little bit of fishing and reflecting.
Walk down by the creek, which is very restful, several places to sit and read a book or just meditate and be.
We have two rivers running through Wapaka, the Wapaka River and the Crystal River. And then we're situated on 22 Spring Fed chain of lakes. And that water feature alone just is, is wonderful for all kinds of canoeing and kayaking adventures, swimming, boating, biking. We've got state parks and, you know, rustic roads and cross-country skiing and snowshoeing in the wintertime. Fall, it's a beautiful time of the year. There's a specific event called ART along the Ice Age Trail or the Hidden Studios ART Tour. We've stayed in Bed and Breakfasts in a lot of places and I think this is my favorite of all. You'll always remember staying at a Bed and Breakfast. It gives you privacy, but it gives you that homey feel as well.
So, Peg, you have a question?
I do. I think that one of these things that happens with a website that's interactive is that you can get the reviews. I wondered what kind of reviews you've gotten. Have you had a lot of experiences with this, stayed or experienced some of these events? I didn't see any in the Iola Winter Carnival. I think that's what we're looking for, reviews of these places, so that maybe somebody else has a perspective besides the...
I mean, right now, there isn't a review mechanism on there where you can add a review or anything like that. It's a good thing to think about, absolutely. As with any of these projects that are economic development orientation, they take a long time and it's just a slow schlog through the wilderness. And this is year three and as we move forward with this, I would imagine those kinds of bells and whistles get added on here. There isn't a place to, though, review, hey, this is how well this particular business did provide us service or not. With the video, obviously, the connection down here is a little slow, but that choppiness will go away when you have a little bit of a quicker connection. So if you're at the Apple Tree, you know, you've thought through staying overnight somewhere, you decide to stay overnight here, you've got breakfast taken care of, you just got your belly full of ludifist, but you don't have supper taken care of. And as you know, we've got all kinds of neat places to eat in Wapaka. It just so happens that you had enough Scandinavian food in the afternoon, you've got to have some Irish food in the evening.
Is that the...
Yeah, I don't think you can add any right now.
Actually, actually, you can.
Can, oh, can you?
Yeah.
Oh, I stand corrected.
You want to jump in and ride mic, but yeah. Actually, that feature is set up. People are able to leave their reviews, leave their comments, or listing that you have out there can manage that. Talk about that more, but I'll get into it a little...
There you go.
I'm Shan, the operating partner here at T-Dubs Pub in Wapaka, Wisconsin. The building itself was built in 1868 and we tried to keep the posts and beams, the stone walls, that kind of thing as natural as possible. Our menu consists of Irish amber salmon, that's our number one seller. It's a fresh eight-ounce portion of Norwegian salmon that we cut in-house. We get the fresh filets. We make all of our sausages in-house for our Bangers and Smash. We switch up those flavors every week. Lydia, our executive chef, she just decides, okay, this is what we're going to have this week for sausage. Last week, it was a spicy Bloody Mary lamb sausage. So we have a really expensive menu. As far as our bar goes, though, we do have a seasonal specialty drink menu, that are drinks that are made in-house. And then we also have a full martini menu. I mean, people that come here for the first time, we want them to be able to have a great conversation, to have a wonderful meal, great drinks, and to feel like they had just a wonderful experience while they're here.
And we could go on and on with that, but for the sake of time, let's go back to that PowerPoint. So we have 34 of those videos and those videos, and you're going to see on your handout, are pretty inexpensive when you combine all the resources and do it as a group. And you have this handout, I think that was sent to you in your packet. I'll just quickly go through this. Couple of results here from the 2013 effort. Before I get to that, just a few pieces of data. Why the internet? I mean, this is a pretty simple one. 89% of travelers use the internet to plan their trips. Eighty-nine percent of travelers use the internet to plan their trips. Seventy-three percent of those people search for something specific to that passion, that it's your, whatever it's your day thing is that you come here for, they're searching the internet to figure out where they want to go. Very few people use telephone anymore, they don't rate it as very important. Nine percent said that it's essential in finding their trip. Fifty-eight percent of travelers depend upon online sources to find local activities when they're here. An app is in development, that's going to be part of this while they're here, then they can go on their mobile device. Website just as quickly and easily as they would if they were at home on their desktop. When you look at the use of video, it's growing. People don't re, they just don't spend a lot of time reading and researching like they used to. They want to view something. So last year alone, just from '12 to '13, 45% of travelers in 2012 relied on video to plan their trip. That's up over half in 2013, I anticipate that growing even more. So a lot of reasons why there was the choice to go to internet and video. And when we reviewed and evaluated the tools that we used, video was the most popular, clearly. Very quickly in that one month, so this is a one-month sprint. The middle number there, there was a 400% increase in web traffic relative to the past, so significant increase in web traffic. I'm sure part of that was driven by the fact that you got a TV commercial running in a Milwaukee market. You've got those banner ads and those 400,000-plus impressions that you're seeing when you're searching for things that would drive you to Wapaka County. Over 5,300 YouTube views, so 5,300 videos reviewed. That's a significant number of videos in a very short period of time, one month, the month of June. And then the map was used 2,100 times on their trip. Okay, I want to go from here to there, how do I do that? So, a little bit about X from the program so far.
So again, in the year one and two, we did the research, the brand development, the website development, the online ads, the YouTube videos, and that was a result of the Department of Tourism giving us $54,000. And then you and your fellow eight municipalities over a two-year period contributed to just over $40,000. So we did build all of that, you know, for every one of the businesses that we have involved with this website. And we may have missed some businesses, but we painstakingly put as many businesses as we could on this website, so there's over 1,300 businesses out there right now. People are able to actually access this on their own and we can show them how to do this very quickly if they want to. And we're going to be, obviously, going out in the communities and trying to get more participation as we go down the road. Mike and I, obviously, our time, we threw that in there so that the state knows exactly the amount of money that locally we contributed to the project here. So here's what year three looks like. Again, continue on the website development, the online ads, YouTube videos, doing those mobile apps. Now, new this year visitor packages. So what we can offer this year, and we intend to, is for people to be, actually be able to list a coupon on the website that people can download, bring into the business. We're able to track that multiple ways. And so again, show people in their businesses that they actually are making sales via the website and people are looking at it. So that's going to be offered as part of the packages that we're doing this year. And then again, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, it's their last year involved in the project, and the municipalities were asking this year to stay involved. Actually, we believe that you should stay involved as we grow this too. So that $12,000 was broken down according to the population, similar to year one and two. We divided the money up according to the population. So of those eight communities, you have 20% of that population. So 27% of that, $12,000, is 3240. That's how we arrived at the numbers. And then Mike and I, we put a budget number in there. No doubt in my mind we'll be way over that. And then beyond. So we're looking to get businesses involved to the tune of $36,000, keep the municipalities involved, and Wapaka County, we want to get involved. We did this presentation earlier, or just late last month at the county board. They're very enthusiastic about what we're doing. We're going to be going back in this year, I think. We were asking them to be a part of this starting next year, but I think we're going to go back in this year and ask them to contribute money for this year. The more money we raise, the more advertising we're going to do, the more we're going to reach out into Milwaukee and Fox Valley markets, the better chance we have of bringing people spending 96, you know, cents in our businesses, our retail and service sector businesses. So right now we have a targeted three-month period of April, May, June, that's part of the grant, but we can advertise in other periods. We're probably going to stay away from the third quarter because that is the huge quarter for our county. That's when most of the visitors come here in summer. Why wouldn't you come here in summer? But we definitely need to build on fall and winter and Terry obviously knows this, she's been working at this for a long time too. So the more, again, it's kind of similar to, I think, when the last time I was here and said, I'm glad you brought Brennan on board. I mean, I'm glad we're doing this, adding to what Terry's already doing. The more we do this, the more we spend, the bigger the buck, I think, that comes back. I mean, we spend less than 1% of the money coming in here to reach back out and bring more people into our county compared to other areas. We're way, 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 way on the low side. So that's what, that's where we're going. And if you looked at the report, it really described the packages clearly in there about what Level 1, Level 2, Level 3 are available, so everybody can get on that website. Level 2 allows them to get their Facebook, all their social media in there, pictures of who they are. Level 3, we can create that YouTube video that people want to see about your business that can be linked to their website. Again, people can find that business immediately and learn a heck of a lot about it while they're in the county or when they're ready to come to the county. And we're trying to drive them here, obviously, with our advertising. So that's why we want you to stay involved. We think this is an important project for your, our local businesses and as a partner with the rest of the communities in the county, as well as the county. With that, we'll stop and take any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions of Dave or Mike? Obviously, this presentation is leading towards the request for the $3,240 to be used alongside with the JEM grant. And these monies, of course, are coming from room tax dollars to help participate in this. So do we have anybody who has any questions? Go ahead, Deb.
You know, in the packet, there's the July 19, 2011 council proceedings. I asked the question then, if the committing to this amount would short local groups requesting room tax funds? And I was told no. It would not be shorting anyone because we had a small surplus in the room tax fund. Again, this was 2011. Is that the same true now? Are we going to be, well, obviously we would be shorting groups. You guys explain that a little bit?
Well, from the room tax standpoint, we, we did have requests that were greater than what we had available. So people that requested money did get less than what they requested. Did they get, everybody that requested money did get money. Did they all get what they requested? No. You know, I mean, so I'm not sure where you want to go with that, but it's, it, it's a little bit of sharing the money where we think that it's going to do the best for us. Henry, you want to touch on that too?
No, I, it was, I think that's always the case. We always have more requests and money. That's very seldom that that doesn't occur.
Well, 2011 it occurred.
Well, there's times where we hold money back too because we...
That's probably the 10%.
Because we're looking for new projects or special projects. So there are times when we have held money back and I agree, I think there was a year, and it was probably 2011, where we didn't distribute all the money that was available.
It's probably one project that really does fit nicely the criteria for room tax, right? You're putting it in to generate room stays. Real direct correlation between the expense and what you're attempting to do.
This is very nice, this is the second time we've seen this, but it's, it's very nice and appreciate the update on what you guys have done for us. Obviously, we got to get the word out and that's what we're, we're trying to do with this project. Anybody else have any questions? Comments? If not, we are, it is on our agenda to, to look at accepting or approving that project.
I'd make a motion to approve $3,240 to the Wapaka County Tourism Project for year three of the cooperative marketing effort.
Second. Yeah, we have a motion by Hagan and a second by Keeland that we approve the joint effort of the Tourism, Wapaka County Tourism Project in an amount of $3,240 for this third year of the program. Any discussion?
That would be from the room tax.
Yeah, this, these, the funds would be coming from the room tax, you understand that, Paul and Alan?
Right.
Okay, Alan, sorry. Yes. Okay, any other comments? We'll have Sandy call the roll then.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson. Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
And Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thanks guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to go back to announcements and correspondence and I want to have the chief introduce his new officer.
Jay, you're going to have to stand up now. Come on up to the podium where there's a microphone. This is Officer Jay Hellickson. He's our most recent hire, I think, what, started about two, three weeks ago?
Yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks ago. He's from the Appleton area, he's currently in field training and right now he's with Officer Paul Benchwell. And our training program is rather intensive, about a 12-week program. So he's just getting his feet wet. We finally found a uniform big enough for him, he's a tall guy. After we hired him to fit the uniform, we had to go get a new one for him, so we couldn't use the old stuff. If you could just say just a little bit about yourself and...
Um, I was born in Manomaha, grew up in Tucson, Arizona, lived there for 21 years, moved back, went to the academy, got a job over in, out of Amity County, over in Appleton. So started here two weeks ago, so I'm looking forward to moving to the area. I like to hunt and fish, I'm an outdoors guy, so it's a good area for me to be in.
Thanks. So there's proof, he's at least 21 years old, not much over that, but he's, he looks like he's underage, but he's, he's of legal age.
I shaved this morning, so that's, that's the baby face.
First time this year, okay, thanks.
Wow, gee. Thanks, welcome Jay.
Thank you.
At least we welcome you, I'm not sure why he hired you after all this, but, thanks. Okay, let's move on then back to, we have a, we're going to new business, we have a resolution, this is Resolution Number 1337. It's a resolution authorizing ACH agreement with the First National Bank. And Jean, you want to just comment on what you told me earlier?
Formality for the bank, their request. Not a resolution.
Okay. So this is a request coming from the bank, we are using the automatic, you know, debit credit type, taking money in and out of our accounts, so they're asking us to do this. And this is the first bank that has asked us for that. Okay. All right, so we'd be...
Motion to approve Resolution Number 1337.
Have a motion by Shamble, second by Olson that we approve of Resolution Number 1337. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Meele.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
And Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
All right, thanks. Let's move on to number two, which is under the new business, which is the approval of the WDNR grants. Aaron, you ready?
Sure, thank you Mayor. Henry and I had a conversation about this just earlier today and given that Henry has kind of had most of the contact with the donors since the beginning of this project, Henry would like to take you through his memorandum and I can fill in any questions that you may have.
Yes, thanks Aaron. In your packet was a memorandum with some additional information, the two grants. Back in April, council did authorize staff to apply for this and actually Aaron led the effort to do that and I think we should let him touch about every grant application we're doing because he's doing really well. Seems to be bringing very success on those. The grants are for projects in South Park that we've called Phase 2. That would be the parking lot improvements, it'd be a small expansion but, and a resurface, restriping, lighting through the park and some shoreline restoration as well as some, some path work, some trail work. The way the DNR carved up this grant, there's actually two pots of money, one's the stewardship and then the other one's, I think they call Recreation Trails. And there's about $190,000 worth of projects. How we're proposing to match that is on your, probably your last, second to last page in the memo where we show the grants and then the phases and then the percentages. But we've got the grant paying half of it, the donors paying about 25,000 or 13% and then the city contributing the 37%, which is about 70,000, of which about 40,000 is a land donation and 12,000 is in-kind labor materials. One of the purposes of putting this together is for you to see kind of where we're at with all three projects. If you remember, you approved submitting sport fish restoration grant last meeting. So this, probably the most noteworthy thing here is that we're, the donors have really stepped up. They committed 100,000 per year times five years and they're well ahead of that goal. And that's, that's a really great thing to see. Do you have any, any questions? Probably the next step beyond awarding the grants or accepting the award, the staff would have to come back to you with some proposals to design the project, it'd be in a couple months and we'd move. So I don't know if, I touched on everything, Aaron, or if you've got questions for Aaron or myself?
So what we'd be looking for then is an approval of these two different grants. One is the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Grant in the amount of 49,240 and then we have the Recreation Trails Act in the amount of 45,000. We could take both of those together.
I'd make a motion that we approve applying for both of those grants as we just read.
Second.
We'll be clarified to accept them because we...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, accept them.
Second.
Thank you Scott. Second by Fenske, or motion by Fenske, second by Porczatsky that we accept the two WDNR grants for the Phase 2 South Park project. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Paul Meele?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Deb Fensky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
And Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Next, then, we are going to go to the capital financing plan, and we have Brad Vergut here from our, from Robert W. Baird to make the presentation for us. Your presentation starts on page 52 in your packet there.
Brad, welcome.
Thank you. Did you want me to use the PowerPoint presentation too, or just follow the packets you have?
You can.
Okay.
Yeah. We do have it on TV too, so as much as they can see of that would be great.
Okay.
(coughing)
(coughing)
I know. You know what? I tried to do it. I'm here like, I'm upside down.
I can do it by hand, too.
Printed out a whole bunch of stuff. Print out those pages. Actually...
Suddenly, shh, it's just... Really?
I honestly did, and that's what I wanted.
Okay. No problem. (coughing) Wow, I got mine rotated now, but it's...
How did you do it?
I did that, and I got it upside down. Then, then you gotta go, tape you, and then go to clockwise or counter, and then probably go to counter.
See? That's what happened. It went upside down. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Go to counter and hit it, please.
Counter clockwise?
Now hit it. Now hit again.
Okay.
You hit sideways.
I know. I'm scared, but I should've printed it.
Put your computer sideways.
Oh, there it is. Get it upside down. Like, there's something wrong here.
I say so.
I'm surprised when I trip and I'm, or dropping it. I couldn't go to therapy because I rolled my toes a second. But now I can.
But no cast.
I'm careful. There must be anything else on the foot.
Boot or whatever, Aaron.
No. I clomped all over Vegas.
Thank you. Okay. I think we got it. So, in your packets, then, about four or five pages in is the start of this presentation that I'll be going through. And this first section of this presentation is, reflects a financing plan for all of the projects identified in this first section here of your packet, all the capital improvement plans. So, we use that as a starting point to develop additional scenarios for the council to consider, really with, I think to kind of help you, help the council make decisions on affordability and considerations in the debt policy that's currently in place. So, just by way of a summary, there's a total of four scenarios. The first was that 115, that means January 15th. So, that's the scenario that, again, reflects financing all of the projects included in this memo. And this is structured, it's really based as a follow-up to some planning that was done over the summer. This was structured to allow the debt service mill rate. And anytime you see mill rate in here, it's referring just to your debt service mill rate, not the operational mill rate of the city. It's been separated out. So, this would allow that mill rate to drop in 2014 and 2015 from where it had been in 2013. And then, it minimizes the combined mill rate, and it levels that out, out in 2016 through 2019. From there, we, the other, the new scenarios that were developed would have us first, again, financing all of those projects that are included in the memo under Scenario One, under that 115 analysis, but target $3.10 for the debt service mill rate. So, instead of allowing that mill rate to drop to a level lower than it is this year, and then jump back up, just keep that level to smooth that out. The concept there, the idea is that sometimes it's easier for cities to budget on the operational side if they don't need to budget around peaks and valleys on the debt service side. If we have a relatively stable debt service mill rate that you can budget and forecast out for a number of years, does make the longer-term planning on the operational side a little easier. And the second scenario, then, we start taking into consideration the debt policy of the city as it stands today. And just to briefly review that, that's really of, there's four prongs to that policy. First says that the city won't borrow more than half of what's allowed under state statutes. And there's some fine points to this, but just in general, that's what the policy states. And for, that would be for levy-supported projects. So, your general fund-type levy, city taxpayer-supported projects. The second prong of the policy said you won't have more than, you won't use more than 75% of your capacity when you consider general obligation debt that's issued to fund TIF districts and enterprise, enterprises of the city. And then the third, it says that the total debt service, well, that's principal plus interest, isn't going to exceed 15% of your operating budget on an, any, any given year. The reason for the three approaches there is first to, well, provide continuity and guidance for future elected officials, and so that there's a consistency over the longer term. But also, it's there to help protect the city. The 15% figure may be somewhat conservative. Some communities that I know of are setting a levy limit, or a debt service limit of 25% of operating expenditures. As far as the legal capacity to borrow, the concept there is to preserve capacity, so that if there'd be an emergency or some unforeseen event, some, some reason that the city needs immediate access to market capital, you have the borrowing capacity to do that. So, so the second scenario, then, we, we just removed projects, we removed dollars, is how I should say it. We didn't go through project and project. We're not, Baird isn't making any judgment on the merits of any of these projects. But instead, in the second scenario, we reduced the total borrowing to such a level that the city is, utilizes up to 65% of what's allowed under state statutes, 65% of your statutory authority. And then the third scenario, in this case, we removed all the projects that, that are not related specifically to the public works facility and the gym project, and then minimized that mill rate from 2015 through 19. Concept here is to say, if you wanted to just focus on those two needs at this point, what would that, what would that cost? What would it look like from an affordability standpoint? So, that's the summary, that's the overview. Just to get into some of the detail here, but I'll keep this somewhat at a higher level. Certainly can answer questions if you'd like me to drill down further. But this is a summary here of the capital improvement program of projects included in your memo. So, underneath the total column on the right-hand side, you'll see that this has total financing needs between 2014 through 2018 of $11,688,000. The debt issuance on the bottom there, that's just, that's a summary of one set of financing, one approach to the financings that the city could use to fund this level of projects, and then meeting these other constraints that I laid out in the summary page previously. This represents the summary of a repayment plan. Column number one on the left-hand side is all of the levy-supported debt of the city. So, this includes debt that's not general obligation. There are some projects of the city that were funded with lease revenue bonds. That's included in that column number one. And then columns two, three, and four is the allocation of borrowings between city levy-supported projects, water-supported projects, and sewer-supported projects. The combined debt column reflects the existing obligations plus the impact of the new financings, and the mill rate is reflected on the second column from the right-hand side. So, in this case, I just can't read that. Yeah, where you see that line, that's, that line is in 2015. So, your debt service budget for this year for mill rate was $2.78. That would drop to $2.68, and then bump back up to $3.04, remain at that 304 through 2019. Okay. Got it. Thanks, Charlie. So, then graphically, this, this graph sort of compares where this policy lines up, or where this plan lines up with your debt policies. The bar graphs, the total height of the bar graph represents your statutorily allowed borrowing capacity. That's if you'd use it 100% of what the state of Wisconsin says you can issue as a city. And then the number above that represents how, where you fall, how much of that policy, I'm sorry, how much of that capacity is utilized. So, for that first bar, for example, 2013, the, the black line, that's the principal that's outstanding. And when we're looking at the capacity question, it's always based on principal, not on total payments. So, the city is, in 2013, was at 61% of its statutorily allowed capacity. Under this plan, you can see that the green portion of the bars represents the future financings. And you can see under this plan, you get as high as 87%. So, well outside of the policy set by, by the city. So, going to Scenario Two, this has the same level of funding. This has this, the $11,688, that's the same as the January 15th analysis, except here, we have the, a different structure. The 2.78 doesn't drop, stays at $3.10, and remains at that level through 2019 before dropping off in 2020. This doesn't really change anything as far as the capacity issue. You peak at, in this case, 86% instead of 87%. Now, the second scenario is where we just chopped off dollars, and we found that if you reduce the total financing needs by 55%, you get to a point, whoops, you get to a point where your mill rate here, it actually would drop going into next year. Your mill rate in 15 through 19 would, based on these estimates, would be less than the debt service mill rate the city has in place, this year's budget. From a capacity standpoint, we hit the, you meet the 65% of legal capacity, rather than 87 or 86%. So, this is more affordable. I mean, that's how, I guess it's as simple as looking at it like this. It's gonna be clearly more affordable to the city. And then the third scenario, this is where the, only the public works and the gym projects are included. So, you see that's all, that's, we're showing in 2014 and 2015. No future projects included in this plan, 16 through 18. So, the total projects is five, just under $5.9 million. And here, the debt service mill rate increases up to $2.80, stays at that level, to 2.80 to 2.81 range through 2019 before dropping off again. And capacity-wise, this looks very similar. It's a little, little lower than that second scenario, but you're at 60% of capacity. I'm sorry, 68% is the peak in 2016, but then you'll see that quickly drops off because of no future borrowings after 2015. Okay? So, you're seeing, you're, that green bar portion of the, of the graph is gonna be smaller than it was in Scenario One, and in the January 15th scenario. One thing to keep in mind on this, you know, on this graph, the way the capacity works, because it's based on the valuation of the city, for every 1% growth in value, you, of course, would have a 1% growth in your allowable debt capacity. And that's why these bars are, you know, they're increasing. That's why the capacity's getting larger. We have assumptions in here based on the five-year history of city growth. We have assumptions of 1.42% annual growth of property values here in the city, along with plug numbers we put in for construction that took place in 2013 that'll be reflected in these values. And then finally, the last step here is that we wanted to make sure to take a look at the affordability for the utilities of the impacts of these financings. And all three scenarios are laid out here for the water utility. This is what's called a coverage analysis. This compares the revenues of the system to the expenditures of the system, and says, well, how, we take revenues minus the expenses, and we want that, in this case, to be at least 1.25 times any principal and interest payments in any given year. And you can see you're well above that, you know, for, for each of these scenarios in water. This is, so for, from the utility standpoint, this would, these would be affordable scenarios. And for the sewage system, here, the bond covenants call for at least 1.1x coverage. And in this case, again, this is, you're approaching 2%, or 2x coverage, you know, beginning in 2015. So, that, that's what I've got. I'd be glad to go, you know, definitely to drill down to more detail if you like, or answer questions, or...
I had a question, Brad. Could you go back to one of the bar charts? Okay, so, the existing principal outstanding, that's only tax-supported principal?
No, for this chart, that's only general obligation principal. It doesn't include lease revenue bonds that are tax-supported.
Okay. So, in the new principal debt?
Mm-hmm.
Does that include, 'cause you're talking about financing $11 million, however, only six of that is tax-supported?
Well, this would only include, let me go back to that $11 million. I wanna make sure I'm on this, understanding.
The, the 11.6, 11.6 million there?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, 6, 6.088 million is general fund, and the remainder is water and sewer.
Okay. But for the capacity test, then we look at general fund regard, or the, geo borrowings regardless of the support to make that repayment, because you're still capped ultimately at 100% of capacity is the max, even if you have sewer supporting or water supporting.
And I know we've talked about this before, but you could finance water and sewer with a revenue bond?
You could.
If that was your route. I mean, if that, if you were, if that chart was a problem for you, I mean, and that's not untraditional.
Yeah. That would be an option to look at. My concern there would be the affordability. You know, the, the rates would be much higher, because the city's, enterprise systems are small relative to what else is in the market. So, the investors are gonna demand a much higher rate than they would for general obligation debt.
Yeah. No, I understand, but just so people understand that, you're, you're funding, you're financing enterprise funds with geo-obligation?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's working against your cap, your established cap by doing that?
Yeah. And that was one of the reasons the city put the two, the first two prongs of that test, where 50% of that cap, your 50% limit is just for levy-supported, but then they, they recognized that, and they said, "We need another 25%," because the city historically has funded with geo-debt at some enterprise systems. Yeah.
Um, you know, we were talking about that today at our staff meeting, and we had an $8 million expansion 20 years ago at the treatment plant. And that 8 million would work against that 75% indebtedness, and would probably not allow us to do that, where it was a valid project, it was financially fiscal. us to do that where it was a valid project, it was financially fiscal, to do that at that time, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We expanded the plant for obvious reasons, and we had other funding mechanisms, and it was all fiscally responsible, but would work against that policy, that 75%.
Mm-hmm.
And would probably disallowed it. So I think it's really critical that we look at that debt policy and come up with one that we, at this point, we feel comfortable with.
Brad, do you have in your presentation there, that, it's page 79 of our packet, but it's the, uh, city will pack us compliance with debt policy?
No, I don't, I don't have that in my packet.
You want to use mine?
Sure. I mean, I have the data. I just don't have it on the screen.
Oh, no, if you could just, everybody, if you could just look at page 79, and you're, you want to shut that down, so I can.
Oh.
Down, it comes from up there.
Well. I didn't want it to. I could have stood there the whole, sat here the whole time?
I don't know if I should have.
Looked like this.
Black.
Okay.
Huh, the projector.
Well, we just go to the pages. We need to. Thanks, that's good. So if everybody's on page 79, remember at the beginning Brad was talking about our, the debt policy that the city has put in place? And then he went through the scenarios here, so I'll, I'll let him do that.
Okay, so the first test here is the debt limit of tax-supported debt, tax levy-supported debt, should not exceed 2.5% of equalized valuation of the tit-out equalized valuation of the city. The state statute limits general obligation debt to no more than 5% of tit-in. So a little, you know, a little bit of a nuance there between the state and the city. But because, but we, but the policy in place is at 2.5%. So when I was referencing 50% of state capacity, that, that's the same thing as this first policy, or the first prong of the policy. So the city's value for 2013 is just over $335 million. 2.5% of that is $8,386. That's the maximum principal amount that can be outstanding under your policy. So tax-supported debt, principal outstanding is $3.169 million. So the city has remaining capacity of 5.2 million of general obligation debt to fund tax-supported projects. Then the second piece of the policy says that the debt limit, general obligation debt will not exceed 3.75% of equalized value. So 3.75% of the 335 million is $12,579. The total outstanding is $12,189. So under this test, there's $389,000 of remaining capacity. And then the third piece says that your annual debt service, that's the principal plus interest, on tax-supported debt should not exceed 15% of your general fund revenues. So for 2012, general fund revenues are, were 4.5 million, 15% of that, 683,000. In 2014, the tax-supported debt service, annual debt service is 516,664. So you're on a positive variance to the policy by 166,539. Let's see. Tax support, oh, I see. Then the next piece pulls in, this, the 2014 tax-supported annual debt service, that pulls in non-general obligation debt. So that's, there's a hundred, a portion of the Hendrickson project was funded with lease revenue bonds. Library and City Hall were also funded with lease revenue bonds and supported with a tax levy. So under that, when we, when we pull those into the mix, now the city is exceeding that policy by $282,000. And then this fourth piece here says that the useful life of any assets financed is not going to exceed the term of the financing. So you're not going to, you know, borrow 20 years to buy a new computer, or new computers, for example. We're just going to make sure the asset is used before the, before, that the debt is paid before the asset is used up.
And the maximum is 20 years, though.
Yeah, max 20 years. And that, that aligns with state statutes also.
Okay. So when you look at the, this page 79, you look at all three of those, you don't just look at one of them to make sure that we're in compliance with our debt policy. So, I mean, as Brad said that, but just, if you were to look at scenario number one, we would have to not borrow more than $5,216,000. If we did, we would be over our debt capacity, uh, policy that we have. And in scenario two, though, which is much worse, we would not be able to borrow more If we did, we would not be in compliance with our debt policy. You follow how that works there, everyone? So that's what this, this sheet was trying to explain to you. Again, any comments? Questions? Remember, we had a presentation the last meeting in January where the department heads did bring forward their capital request? And I think it's important that we understand too, that, you know, where, when you're talking about capital requests, not all of the capital requests are going to be funded through financing. You know, we're, hopefully, we're going to be able to finance some of that, or pay for some of that through property, current property taxes and so on. And then we still, we have the availability in some situations to get grants that will pay for some of those things too, so as we found out tonight. So it's important that the, the debt requ, or the, the capital requests that we had were not anticipated that they would all be done with, with borrowing, but of course, obviously, the majority of it would be done that way. Yeah, I, I'm going to take questions, and I, I would like to make a couple of comments before we finish up on that, but go ahead.
Well, I guess, you know, as staff was reviewing this, you know, Jeannie and I, you know, went through the exercise with Brad and then the staff. I think what, it's a policy, and you have to look at all, use the stool. It's a nice analogy, right? Three factors, and you're looking at it, you know, all have to be considered. But is there one that has any more weight than the, see, that, that's the nuance of this, because if council said, will, and I'm just throwing out a number, and you know this has never been discussed, but if they said they would raise the mill rate 50 cents to fund capital, that's going to make this factor three look so much different. And, you know, you would be out of compliance in factor two, but the cash to pay for it would be allocated. So I, you know, I'm having, I'm still, I, you know, I don't articulate it very well, but I'm having a hard time, you know, and they're the policymakers here and have to interpret this policy and understand it. How do, you know, is there a weight? There's no weight, because I've asked you that.
Yeah.
You don't have a weight.
Right.
You know?
You know, what you're talking about, Henry, I think, and the policy is here to help protect the city. You know, the policy is here so that the city understands the affordability and understands its resources of debt capacity that's available should there be an emergency. In the scenario you laid out, I, some communities, mainly counties, I haven't seen a lot of cities, but some counties have a requirement in their capital policy that says a portion shall be funded with current funds, whether it's 10% or some percentage typically is how counties write it. The benefit there is, you're right, it would, it's going to help with that bullet point number three. But the number three is going to, that's more of a long-term, you know, if, if there's a 20-year obligation out there, that number three is going to be impacted for 20 years based on what we set up today. And the policy of paying cash for a portion of the projects, that's an annual budget item. So it becomes, in my opinion, an affordability issue that if there's another economic downturn worse than we just went through, for example, that could be the first thing pulled from the budget. If, if, you know, the city could say, we're not going to cash fund street repairs this year because of affordability. But once the debt's in place, that's there for, you know, probably 20 years in most cases. So that, that's the distinction. But the, I think the policy, you're right, it's not prioritizing what's more important, but it's trying to recognize that there is a, an affordability, there's a limit, maybe 15% is not the right number. There's an affordability, though, of how much city budget dollars can be expended towards debt payments. And then there's a recognition, the city should try to preserve some capacity for unforeseen, for, for things that wouldn't be covered by an insurance policy, for example, destruction of downtown street, for example, that might need immediate replacement without being, having time to fit into a longer-term, five- or six-year plan.
If we were to look at the, all of the scenarios that Brad had presented to us tonight, you know, obviously, they were of different dollar amounts and so on, and there would be projects, if we went ahead with, with scenario one, of course, that would include all of the projects. If we went with scenario two or three, then you would be looking at reducing some of the projects. But in almost every case, when you look at the, you know, we get pretty high on the, on the state debt capacity for a couple of years in there, and then it starts to reduce and so on. I do agree, although I don't want this to go along with our decision on, on, on a borrow, but our, our council, the members of our council are different than they were when the original debt policy was put into place. And this is maybe something that we should review more regularly than we do. So I would suggest in the coming months that we do look at our debt policy and see if that's something that council is comfortable with. So I am asking, Henry, that we put this on, hopefully, one of our March council meetings, or if it doesn't fit, then, then into either April or May on that. But I do think that we need to look at the debt policy that we have here and, and see if, if we're still very comfortable with that, or if it needs to have some changes. And this would give us the opportunity to also look at other communities as they went through their downturn and how they're handling it as we come back out of it. And I think that's probably the first thing that we should do, is really look at the debt policy and, and see what our comfort level is there, too. I've come to the conclusion that, and we talked about this, I have the advantage, of course, that I meet with the, once, on a monthly basis, I meet with the staff, the department heads, and we have the ability to discuss many things. And we spent last week's meeting just talking about this, presentation today. And I've come, personally come to the conclusion, although we talked about this at the meeting is, is that the Public Works Facility is a very important project. The Main Street projects are very important projects, but as you see from Brad's presentation here, if we do those projects, the, obviously, the, the gym project has to be done. I mean, we have to figure out a way to do it. I mean, otherwise, we shut down the old gym, you know? So we have to talk about those things and how we're going to do that, although I think we have a plan for that outside of a borrow. But my point was, is that I believe that the Public Works Facility is a very important project, and I don't want us to stop thinking about it. I do not think that it is a project that we will do, in my personal opinion, within the next five years. Now, will we do it in year six or year seven? Yes, I believe, as we look at this, as the debt falls off, I think we might have a better chance of, of being able to afford that. Now, John's going to tell you, of course, that we lose, first of all, we're going to have to do something with those buildings that we have. They're old buildings, we're going to have to repair them, we're going to have to make them work. It's not going to be as nice to, it's not going to work as well having all these vehicles and people at other buildings. Those are things that we've been doing, and it's not perfect, and it's not even close to perfect. But I think we're going to have to try and make it do, again, this is my opinion speaking here. And I, I look at this too, in that we have many other projects. If we look at doing the Public Works Facility and the gym, which is, is a necessity that we do that, we're not going to have, it doesn't look like we would have the borrowing capacity under our debt policy to do anything else. And we wouldn't be able to do it for five years. So if a truck, one of our pile trucks goes down and it can't be fixed, we can't buy it if we, if we go ahead and do the, do the larger projects. So we do have to look at the project, maintaining the assets that we have now, but still looking forward to the asset that we need in the future. So we have to keep in mind each time we do this, that we plan for that future project. And, and this isn't to say that all the requests that the department heads have brought forward besides the Public Works Facility and the Main Street project are not going to be done, or, you know, all those projects are going to be done, but these two are not. That's not what I'm saying. I think we need to scrutinize all projects to make sure that they are something that we want to do in the next few years. I just think that our borrow, especially if we're going to stay within our debt policy that's current, we're limited to a, a very small amount, and those things are, are not going to get us a whole lot of capital that we need. Obviously, you know, we have, we know in our budget, we do have one police car that we buy every year, that is in our general budget, although there are other vehicles that, that the chief has that need to be replaced, I think you said, like, every third year or so, that, so we, we have to keep that in mind too, obviously, that we need to keep our police vehicles running out there. And we obviously need to fix holes in our, in our potholes in our roads and stuff like that. And this, I'm just afraid that if we try to do this, everything that we're asking for, we're not going to be able to do anything else. And I, and this is kind of proving that that is true, just looking at our debt policy and how we, close we get in a couple of years to that state limit. If we have an emergency, what are we going to do? Okay? It looks a lot rosier as we get out a little ways, and that's why I said the, the five-to-six year timeframe, and I don't want us to forget about it, but I think it's, it's something as we go through the years. So we're going to, this is my plan. We're going to talk about the debt policy. After we talk about the debt policy, we're going to be very close to when, I know, we're only in February, or first part of February, but then we're going to start talking in the summer, late summer, about the 2015 budget. And again, I think we'll incorporate capital request in the summertime before we get to the actual budget part of that, and then look at, maybe during a borrow late this year or early next year, if we believe that we can afford it and it makes sense to do that. So with that said, I, I've said enough, but any comments on that?
I agree with you.
Okay.
So Mayor, the first, first thing we're going to do here in the near future is review our debt policy and see if, if, if we feel it's appropriate for where we are and what we need to do, then we keep it. If it's, seems appropriate to adjust it, we consider adjusting it, and that's going to happen in the next few months.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And I think that, like I said, I think that's the very first step we need to do. Okay? So we're not looking for a motion tonight, we're just looking to get the presentation from Brad. Thank you, Brad.
Okay.
The information, it was very helpful. Anybody ever has any questions, you know, on that presentation, let us know, and we can get those answered from Brad for you. Thanks.
Okay.
Safe, Brad.
Thanks.
Laura, are you going to stay at the bed and breakfast room?
I have a morning meeting, so I have to go back.
Refound it, is where you are. Oh, yeah, okay. I said bed and breakfast. You assumed I said.
Yep.
All right, so I guess I put in my discussion on the recommendations of the mayor, I did those together there. So we're actually looking for an adjournment, but I want to just remind everybody, before we adjourn, that our next meeting, of course, we always hold them on the first and third Tuesdays of the month, but since Tuesday, the 18th, February 18th is on Election Day, we actually are going to meet on Wednesday, February 19th at 6:00 PM, and always subject to call. So everybody mark that down on your calendar so you're not here a day early or a dollar short.
Motion adjourned?
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Kealan, that we adjourn our scheduled meeting, our meeting today. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:32 PM. Thanks, everyone.